For that purpose. This is not designed for that purpose. So this is my input.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions? No? Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
Just wanted to bring up one other thing that I forgot to mention is the light aspect. When the trucks are coming out, basically those lights shine right into the house. So that front room that used to be a bedroom can no longer be a bedroom because all of a sudden at two or three o'clock in the morning, when the lights are shining right into the window, it's now daylight in that house. That's how they're lined up. They're lined up right into the house. They're talking about maybe moving the elevation, but I don't know how they're going to do it, either bring it up or down. But that road again is crowned and sits down so those lights point right into the house. So that's another issue I had to. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? So Cindy and Fausto, do you want to address some of these things or?
Yes, please.
And before you start, Danielle, were a number of these issues brought forward in the open house sessions or?
I think there -- I haven't noted anything that wasn't brought forward at the public open house that we had an opportunity to discuss with Fausto and Cindy, so they'll be able to address a number of these. The plastics burning, but I think we discussed that. That was something that wasn't brought up. But everything else is something that's been taken into consideration with how can we implement controls into the site plan. Some of the operations, so the suggestion to use the Heinz, I think we're referring to the AMCO warehouses that were previously used by Heinz. I'll let Cindy speak to that as it really relates to the operations. The orientation of the proposed building as it relates to what's there now, again, I'll let Cindy speak to that. But I think everything else with respect to truck turning movements, hours of operation, noise, headlights, buffering, the setback of the building, so often we use setbacks as part of that separation distance or mitigation that will help to address the same thing. So we've looked at all those things, maybe if Cindy can address more of the operational things that are specific to Mr. Amiconi's operation.
Okay. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. In fact, since 2014, the public meeting where the residents first made a number of their concerns known, Mr. Amiconi has been quite busy trying to make sure he gets the right people looking into these certain set of circumstances to see how he might make his operation better. And so we've heard a lot this evening about how the current operation is impacting the neighborhood. We don't agree with everything that was said. There's no plastic being burned and these sorts of things, but we do know that this operation can be operated better. And so Mr. Amiconi isn't here seeking a bylaw amendment to build more greenhouses, to increase his productivity, none of those things. He's here asking for a bylaw amendment that will allow him to enhance his current operation, to make it better, to reduce the impact on the neighbors. Now, it will help him in that his operation will be better organized, it will run more efficiently, and it, doing that, allows him to address a number of these other things. He'll be able to afford to put noise walls up. He'll be able to afford to landscape the front of those so that they're not just a big wall for the neighbors to stare at, but something rather that's attractively landscaped. We've worked with your administration for three years now to make sure that we get the drainage right, to make sure that we have the truck turning movements correct, to make sure that the site operates in a way that it's much better for these neighbors. We're not asking for more, we're asking for better. And I think that's a very important consideration for council. I know that the neighbors are upset. I understand why they're upset. But bigger doesn't mean it's worse. In this instance, I think allowing the expansion of the packing and loading area, allowing it to be properly designed, will result in better management practices and an improved situation for the neighborhood. And that's why we're here asking for your support. I think as well, you've heard Danielle say that the subject property is designated and zoned agricultural. This is a permitted use. It's in keeping with provincial policy, county official plan, local official plan, and your zoning bylaw. The houses, the house that we want to change the zoning on, it's not in a residential zone, it's in an agricultural zone. It's owned agricultural with an exception that permits that house to be located in an agricultural, on an agricultural piece of property. So everything that Mr. Amiconi, I think that the residents want Mr. Amiconi to do, this application will help along that path to doing it. They will have an improved situation. In terms of the operational questions, can Mr. Amiconi direct all of his truck traffic to the back, kind of work its way through the farm, come out down through the warehouses, out onto Wilkinson Drive in another direction, as Mr. Pugh and I discussed, across from other neighbors who will then be upset as well? We did, we asked Fausto to go out and check and see, can that work? Like is it, but it doesn't. The trucks, the greenhouses are tight, there's a water course through there that there's no bridge over. Hmm? It's, yeah, it's an environmentally sensitive area. So there are a lot of reasons why we can't get over that creek. Mr. Amiconi had a bridge there, he took it out. He'd like to get it back, he's been trying, he's not able to get it back through the conservation authority. So that, I think, was, you know, a suggestion that warranted us taking a deeper look at. We did that. It just doesn't physically work. So that one we cannot accommodate. The other thing that's a bit disturbing is the suggestion about the emissions. And when we heard that complaint, that was a bit new to us, so we've looked into it a little bit. All of the trucks, all commercial trucks, all of our own personal vehicles have to have emissions testing done. The commercial trucks have to have emissions testing done. Mr. Amiconi requires that, the certificates to be presented to him in order to carry his produce. If they fail on the highway, he's equally responsible. So any commercial operation now, any business like this one, make sure that all of the trucks that they're using have the proper emissions testing done and the certificates assigned to the truck. But notwithstanding that, we still want to make sure for the neighbors and for the workers that the emissions on this site are within acceptable limits. Nobody wants to make anybody sick. And so Mr. Amiconi has authorized some air quality testing to be done on his site to make sure that it is operating well within the limits. We believe it is. That's just our thought. We're prepared to prove that. They would have been out already, but it's raining and when it rains for a week like that, you get false readings. It kind of cleans the air a bit, and we didn't want to do that. We want to make sure we wait until the weather conditions are appropriate. We're trying to wait for a kind of a northwesterly wind to make sure that we're picking up what the neighbors would experience. So that's something that should happen over the course of the next week or so. But we want to be able to verify to the neighbors that the emissions leaving this site are well within the limits that the government, that the province establishes. Um, hmm? No, I don't want to go there.
Listen, Danielle, I tried to take note of your list, but I don't know if I hit everything.
The last suggestion was that the building be flipped so that the loading area is central between the road building, loading area, greenhouse.
Yeah. That was, you know, that's a suggestion that's been made. When we started looking at the site plan for this property, we had to take into account the existing operation and how it's laid out and try to make the best of that circumstance. The only way that this enhancement to the current operation works is if it's facing in the direction that it's been designed in. It will not work going out the other way. Because of the existing operation.
We've tried a lot of different kind of options. Like we've been working on this for quite a while, and you know, that we found to be the best and the most maneuverable, that the trucks can actually get around.
Questions from council at all? Council Wilkinson?
Cindy, could you tell me what hardships would you face if we made you abide to the, if we didn't allow the reduction to the setbacks? How would that affect the current design that you got displayed here?
Well, what we'd probably do is just not put the service bay in. You'll notice I'm not looking at Fausto. We'd probably just not put the service bay in and adhere to that. But keep in mind, the setback, we're exceeding our current required setback in the existing zoning. We're not asking for relief on the setback. I think there was a, that was maybe a bit of a misunderstanding in the beginning, but we are adhering to the, we're exceeding the current setback requirement.
There's also the trucks that aren't going to be allowed. That's why we said that it's better because we thought the trucks were going to start parking over too much.
Council Rubiki?
Where the mayor, other than, I've talked to Allen tonight to pick up that garbage that's been there for two weeks across 530, and I think it'll be taken care of tomorrow. I just don't like the blind spot either. I don't know what can be done about that. Whose trees they are, I know whose trees they are, but can they, they're on their own property, that's, I know when I had a gravel pit beside me, I was asked if I would cut down four trees so they can just keep rolling. That's not good for a semi, but they have to stop. But I, I'm on a county road, so I really don't like where they're coming out. That's my big concern, but that can't be done any other way other than maybe moving the docks to the other end, which is going to affect other neighbors. It's just, no warm and fuzzy feelings yet.
Danielle, in the planning layout of this, this blind spot that everyone's talking about, was that addressed by our engineers at all?
So I believe the blind spot that everyone's referring to, or this is the one that I'm thinking, so this is the current eastern driveway, and there is a hedge row right here. We also have the municipal trail now that's crossing in front of that. So I believe, is that the blind spot that you're referring to? Yeah. Yeah. And so that would be, there's also a suggestion that there may be a requirement for the acoustical wall, a bit of a fence to go here, but we've clarified that it won't go any further than the proposed one along the front. So this corner, we would need to look into whether those cedar trees are actually on the property, the greenhouse property, or are they on the abutting residential lot? So we'd want to confirm that. I think they're showing, Cindy's shaking her head. I'm saying I think they're showing on the abutting property as per this site plan. You can see a little bit of the dark line. Yeah.
Okay. So that's then something that we need to consider. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I know I'm not supposed to do that, and I apologize. I just wanted to clarify though, with respect to those evergreen trees, those cedar trees there, Mr. Amiconi planted those trees, and he's happy to remove those, particularly the first five or six. We can do that immediately to improve that blind spot.
So they're on your property then?
Yes.
Okay.
I think that's what.
Yeah, yeah, but it's still, it's tight in that corner.
But they're on, they're on his property and he planted them?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's still tight. That corner, I think for those trees, other than the house, we'll be.
Well, the, the other thing to consider is, like, the blind spots are happening everywhere in this municipality wherever I go. And it is incumbent upon the driver of the vehicle as well as the pedestrian who may be walking along that route or riding along that route. So we're never going to get that perfect anywhere necessarily in this municipality, especially with established items. I still get all these reservations though. Listening, I'm not really hearing any concrete reasons to not approve it based on planning principles. And that's, I think, where we're going to get stuck. But the considerations or the concerns of the residents are still there. I'm happy to hear that you're going to do some onsite air testing, but I'm not sure how much that's going to prove if, right now, you have eight trucks in there at a time, and you're looking at having 10 or more.
Ten.
Right? So you'd almost have to bring in the number of trucks that you're going to have there, either idling or not idling, before you're really going to get a true reading of what the future development holds.
The trucks are already there. The trucks are already there because they're waiting.
That many are already there?
Yeah.
Okay. So you're not really increasing the number of trucks that are coming in?
Yeah. They're already there in standby mode.
Okay.
Yeah, so the site will be kind of the same.
So, Mr. Mayor, when we do that kind of modeling and testing, so for example, on the noise study, it tested the maximum number of trucks that the site can handle for 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And so we've designed the noise mitigation for the worst-case scenario on the site all the time. As opposed to what Ms. Orton was suggesting, what the municipal board decision tried to accomplish those things through operational restrictions. We're doing them through concrete permanent structures that will address it regardless of what happens operationally. So we're trying to find a, like, build a better mousetrap, if you will. You know, a way that will actually carry out what the municipal board had intended would occur on this site.
Okay.
Then the same would be for the emissions testing. We will test assuming and we'll model that, we'll model the air that we get, and we'll assume for the worst-case scenario 24/7 to make sure that it's acceptable.
So I'm just trying to remember all that I wrote down as we were going along to the one gentleman, Mr. Branco, I think it was, brought up that the refrigeration units are on the top of the trailer. So if we've got a 12-foot-high fence and a 14-foot-high refrigeration unit, what, I mean, our good doctor here is maybe the one who should answer that question, I don't know. But how do you address that?
Yes, Your Worship, we actually did address that in the report, and then I think the town asked additional questions in terms of breaking that line of sight. It is true, the source is relatively high. The receiver, though, is modeled at a standard 1.5-meter height, which is the middle of a bedroom window. And if you draw a line between the source and the receiver, the noise barrier will break that line of sight. That's how it's designed.
Counselor Hammond?
Your Worship, thank you. Cindy, we encourage growth in industry and in greenhouses. But as you well know, we have to be very mindful and of the concerns of residents and in the impact that growth can have on a residential neighborhood. And in this case, the residents both on Hodgins Street and on Wilkinson Drive. A lot of the concerns that I've had over the last week or so going through this, and I've driven past the operation numerous times, and to Mr. Amiconi's point, and I, he's been very forthright tonight, you know, with his interpretation about the reefers and the trucks running, because we all know that those trucks and those reefers run a lot, a lot. And you can't be in control of all of that, which he has already said, you know, he can't be there 24 hours a day to control that. We know that loads going out at 3:00 or 4:00 o'clock in the morning, they need that reefer running to keep that product cold. And we talked about that. We also talked about the height of the wall and what it would take to accommodate that. But what I see now with this proposed addition is we're moving the trucks now 50 to 60 feet closer to the residents on the south side of Wilkinson Drive than they were in the past. Obviously, they're going to hear more noise. Can a wall dissipate that? I don't know the answer to that. The experts will, but I don't know the answer to that. The setbacks that you're looking for, I had some concerns about those as well. You know, roughly, I'm still dealing in feet, so you bear with me, from roughly 50 feet to 26 or 27 feet. That was a concern, and that's been talked about here tonight as well. But I guess to my point, looking through this, and it was already raised, and the question has pretty much been answered by Mr. Bronco raised this, I'm neither an architect nor an engineer, but the first thing I looked at when I saw the site plan is, why isn't that building moved north and the trucks coming around to the back and loading and unloading back at the back? And I know you want to align the coolers, and I understand that, but they still have to be offset enough where you still could have access from one to the other. And again, I'm not an architect or an engineer, but that's the, and eliminating all of these outstanding issues that currently are there, including the expense of a, I mean, this wall's not going to be cheap. So, again, and Cindy, we've dealt with each other in the past before about some residential issues, and I'm always sensitive to that. And I think that, you know, again, you don't want to say when big business comes in that the residents have to suffer, and in this case, I sure hope they don't at the end result of all of this. So those are my comments.
Counselor Dunn?
Through you, Your Worship. I just want to go back to the setbacks and how they're, Danielle said that the original setbacks, even though they're coming, they're being reduced, do they meet the greenhouse standards? Is that correct? And just better clarification, if you wouldn't mind?
Yep. Maybe I can use some numbers. So when this property received its site-specific zoning, the A2-1, it was put into a general farm provision, so the same as barns, anything else that could go on a farm. The side yard setback for that is five feet. So as we did an in-depth analysis on the zoning of this property, that is the provision that applies to this property now. So they've applied for that, we've looked at it, they can have a five-foot setback. What they wouldn't have is the coverage that's permitted for a greenhouse operation. So I believe 65, on a regular farm, at 65% coverage, they're at 68. So they would need an addition. This is very minor with respect to, to the coverage. Under the greenhouse provisions, which are not applicable to this property, they would be required to be 50 feet back. And so that 50 feet takes into consideration the types of issues and impacts that can be generated. So I think by what's being brought forward, we're saying this is way better than the five that they're allowed to have. So again, it's the only setback provision we're talking about is along that eastern property line. It's currently used as a driveway. It's currently used just to park reefer trucks. There's, I think, a garbage bin, and there's some employee parking there. So that's how it's currently being used. Under the current zoning provision, so if we were to go to the board, I'd have to admit that yes, the current setback is five feet. What is being proposed, I feel meets the intent of the greenhouse provisions of 50 feet back because they are doing all of these things to address the noise, which is the concerns, the noise, the impacts from the intensity of the use. Again, they're saying nothing's going to happen on that side of the property now because this is a solid wall. It's a driveway, just like it is now, but nobody's going to be parking there, no one's going to be running their reefer there now, no one's going to be putting their outdoor storage there now. It's a solid wall, it's a building. And so that's where we're comfortable in saying, yes, they are coming closer to the property line if the zoning for greenhouses was applicable, but they've also met the intent of that. They've made sure that the impacts of coming closer or meeting the greenhouse setback have been met. So as we went through it, they originally applied, we need the setback provision, we're a greenhouse operation. We go through it technically, they still have the old provision from the 1993 zoning bylaw.
Counselor Jacobs?
I got my answer.
Oh, we did? Okay. All right. Anything further? Counselor Wilkinson?
I guess I'll give my comments, Your Worship. Yes, it's not an ideal situation. I don't think the neighbors are gonna, we're gonna ever give them a answer. They're gonna fully appreciate or enjoy. I think we gotta make the best of a bad situation in a neighborhood where you talk about trying to get two zones to comply with one another in harmony in some sort of direction. I think that AMCO has demonstrated some, actually, I think they've done a considerable amount to try and make the best of a bad situation with the fence. I think that building, the service building, is going to play a little bit of a role here where it will cut down on the noise. The driveway design, I think, has made some improvements. They're addressing the lights, I feel, even, Jeff, I heard you say it's a Crown Road. I'm hoping that the light is cut down by these fences. Sure, I'm going by what I have, but I do think that Mr. Amiconi has done his best to address the best situation we can of a poor situation. Another thing, hopefully, with the size of warehouse that he's building, he will have a lesser need for the refrigerated trailers out in the yard. That makes sense to me here. Where it's explained on page 53, I think it was, E and F, I think F does play a big role into point E that's made there. And that explains that the larger warehouse is going to cut down on the amount of refrigerated trucks, again. That makes sense to me in some way, and it's going to help me make my decision here tonight. So, thank you.
Counselor Rubiki?
Where the mayor, thank you. Couple of things, we're almost, if it goes one way or another, we're either going to be challenged by the taxpayers or challenged this way. I guess I'm going to go to Ruth now. What legal aspect does either one of these have? Is there any more challenges? Is there going to be a decision on our, is there going to be a decision higher up about our decision? Do we have to worry about our decision now what we're making? Are we going to be considered spineless?
I can't speak to that last comment. I would hope not. There's always an appeal of a decision on a zoning bylaw amendment application, so depending on how council decides. Anyone who has appeared here and made comment at this hearing can appeal the decision, or alternatively, the applicant can appeal the decision. So there's always an appeal, and that's to the Ontario Municipal Board. But if I can, I'll just take this opportunity to also elaborate on something Peter had mentioned earlier about the operations of the greenhouse and the ability for a neighbor or anybody affected by the operations to make an application to the normal farm practices protection board based on whether, the question as to whether the operation is a normal farm practice. And so a lot of the issues that have been raised tonight have been about the operations. So council has to make its decision tonight based on planning considerations, not necessarily operational considerations. Also, sometimes those overlap, but planning considerations, and you have the report of our planner, and you have the submissions of Ms. Prince on that basis. So that's how council needs to make its decision and have some comfort in knowing that there is a mechanism that residents can appeal or can apply to determine whether those operations exceed what is a normal farm practice. So I hope that helps to answer your question.
Counselor Dunn?
Through you, Your Worship. My question is regarding the OMB hearing of '96. What was the particulars regarding that? Could we go into that just for a moment, please?
I only have the decision before me, and I just had the opportunity to read it, but what it was, it was a zoning bylaw amendment, and some of the neighbors appealed council's decision to grant that zoning bylaw amendment. And as I indicated, the board was also aware that there was a site plan agreement that had been entered into between the municipality and AMCO, and that site plan agreement had some operational provisions in there, which I would suggest is not the proper place for operational considerations to be agreed upon. However, the board, I believe in an effort to facilitate some consensus as to how to mitigate some of the operational concerns that the residents had, tweaked those provisions in the site plan agreement and dismissed the appeal of the zoning bylaw amendment. So it was a little bit of an odd decision. There was not any real reasons as to why it dismissed the appeal, but I believe it was more of a consensus-based approach to dealing with the situation.
Again, through you, Your Worship. So you mean by dismissed as, who won tonight, if you don't mind, if you mind, so regarding that, it was the?
Ultimately, it would appear the municipality won. Its decision to allow the zoning bylaw amendment was, remained in effect.
Okay. Thank you. And further, Your Worship, I understand the concerns of the residents, and going from the previous hearing of the OMB, they had tried to address the situations that you had with regard to the sound barrier and everything else. Now, this is what this administration is doing as well, is trying to mitigate and trying to do this a little bit better. to do this a little bit better. If we do decide either way, I just heard here, either one can go and fight the OMB and go present your case to them. But if it's already been allowed, and with it meaning it that way, it seems to me that it's just gonna go that way. And at least they're trying, it looks like that AMCO is trying to do everything, if you leave it the way it's going right now, those still problems are still gonna be there. Those existing problems will stay there. The light traffic and everything else, right? The sound, everything like that. At least this is some sort of improvement of trying to prevent the sound barrier and the lighting issues. And that's where I see they're trying to do everything they can to try and address that situation for the residents. And it's not gonna be a perfect situation, but unfortunately, if we, either way, it looks like it may go back there and what happened the last time. So, that's, sort of gives me an understanding where I might have to go with this. Thank you, your worship.
Danielle, if I can come back to you on the planning perspective, then, it's another toughie for us, but if council were to say no to this, and, I mean, your recommendation is to say, yes, proceed. So, if council were to vote this down, we're going against your planning recommendations, in which case the proponent would more than likely go to the OMB. You're not going to be able to represent us, because you've already given your recommendation the way it is. So, we'd have to find a planner somewhere to defend our position. Okay. All right. Well, I don't know, does council have any other, well...
Does she have one more comment?
Very quickly, and this will be the last.
My concern is the diesel fuel, okay? It is a known toxin. It has, there's been all kinds of studies, and right up to 2016, 2017, and as a matter of fact, I gave you all a copy of the truck news, which is right from truck drivers, and it states, "In recent years, the composition of diesel fuel has become less toxic and diesel engines have become more efficient. However, inhaling diesel fumes over extended period of time can lead to acute and short-term health effects." It's a carcinogenic, it is serious. There's no way of testing that, you're in the open air, there's no way of telling. You have neighbors that are almost getting sick to their stomach, because they're trying to work in their back field or their back little plot or their garden, because those diesel fumes are blowing their way. I'm telling you, if you've been exposed by diesel fumes, or you're highly susceptible to them, it does make you sick, lightheaded. And also, if you go down, heart attack, kidney damage, there's all kinds of effects that they have affected with the diesel fumes. So, if this goes through, then how is this gonna come into play? Can someone be held liable for that aspect?
No idea. I'm not a lawyer, but that's the one thing that caught my attention, was that the proponent is suggesting of doing that air testing. And I would, I would hope that it's going to show, either you're correct and your worries are correct, and they'll have to do something to take care of that, or it won't. I can't answer that question, I can't answer what might happen in the future. If I did, I'd have a lot of very wealthy clients, so...
Yeah, and kinda like testing, you wanna make sure you get the optimum days, maybe so many trucks aren't running that day, or maybe there are, so it's hard to tell.
Well, that was my question that I raised, is how are you going to ensure that you're going to have the maximum in there, and they're already there? So, I guess we'll just have to wait and see.
Thank you.
So, council, Counselor Dunn?
Through you, your worship. They also addressed, AMCO did say they were gonna do that air quality testing. Are you still planning on doing that? And would you provide that to the residents, or make it available?
Yes, the idea behind doing the emission testing is a provincially regulated thing, I guess. But the reason we're doing it is for the health and safety of the neighborhood and the workers of AMCO. It's a very serious allegation that we're exceeding the standards, and we want to make sure that we're not. And, you know, Mr. Pootis said that there's no way to test it. In fact, there is a way to test it, and we are testing it, and we're having a third-party professional test it, who's not gonna jeopardize their certification, their license, to help AMCO. They're gonna do it the proper way, following all the proper procedures and rules, and we will share those results when they're available.
Thank you very much. We've just gone through the air testing issue. Not a lot of fun down on the lakefront, where the oil well was, or the gas well, whatever, yeah. So, we know all about that stuff. Anyway, Counselor Rubiki, or Wilkinson?
Your worship, back to a point I made earlier, I know I'd feel more comfortable knowing the, I'd like to put a little addition into the recommendation here, and that comes back to the fence we talked about earlier.
I was going to come back to you to see if that was still a thought, so... But before you go, Mr. Newell wants to...
I understand what you're trying to accomplish. You want to make sure that there is sufficient fencing, but what I'm gonna caution against is making some stipulation to go into the site plan agreement, and that particular stipulation may not even meet the requirements that will be brought out by the acoustic engineers. So, as it stands right now, you, without knowing, without being a professional in that area, and without knowing what the requirements are, putting a stipulation may have exactly the opposite effect of what you're looking for. So, I'd caution about making particular numbers or heights, and stipulating, maybe you want to rather stipulate that the acoustic engineer's report must meet at least the provincial minimums or whichever standards that they are using to that point.
Want to think on it for a minute? Okay, Counselor Rubiki?
Worthy Mayor, thanks. So, we are just voting on the bylaw change amendment.
Well, the recommendation is there to...
No, I'm just saying, so, I mean, there's still gonna be another site plan meeting, there's still gonna be another kick at the can for this, or is this gonna, whatever our decision is, if it's yes, it's going, they can start. If it's no, then we have that process awaiting, or what's, is there another meeting that the residents can say yea or nay?
So, after a decision this evening, there's an appeal period, so we've gotten through that. If the application and the bylaw were approved, the development still can't proceed until it has an approved site plan agreement. So, two things there. Site plans are typically not, they're not required under the Planning Act, so we do not have to send that out to the neighbors. And we also, that is one of the delegated approvals to staff, so it wouldn't normally go out to the neighbors, and it's not now under the current process coming back to council.
Okay. However, yes, if they can bring it back to us, yes.
Administration has made the commitment that in, with respect to site plan agreements that have a contentious or potentially contentious issues, that we would bring that back to council, and it would seem to me that this would be one that would come back to council.
Counselor Wilkinson?
And I guess to make me feel better, when that site plan comes back, if we didn't like the fencing that's proposed at that time, we could make our objection at that point, that'd be the proper spot. Okay, thank you.
All right, there are no further questions, then. I need to know what council's wishes are.
Move by Counselor Jacobs, support by Counselor Wilkinson. Discussion on the motion. All in favor of that motion? And motion opposed and carried. Thank you very much.
So, that is the end of the public meetings. We'll move on to reports of staff and delegation. First report is one regarding the designation of sip and savers event of municipal significance.
Good evening, your worship and council. First, I don't know if you know this, but I'm pregnant. So, my replacement started last Monday, and I'd like to introduce Veronica Samick, who will be replacing me until my return. We are simply asking a procedural designation for the event of municipal significance for sip and saver from August eighteenth to the twentieth. Simply procedural, and the same as last year.
Questions from council. Counselor Wilkinson?
No questions, but I'll move the recommendation.
Moved by, it's on the, I have a motion on the floor, I need a second or first.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Seconded with question.
With the question, yes.
Are you guaranteeing it's not gonna rain this year?
We have event cancellation insurance, in case the rain is... No, I cannot make those guarantees, but I'll try, I'll pray.
Further discussion on the motion? Actually, I, we didn't know you were pregnant. Congratulations. And Veronica, welcome, I know we've met already, so we'll be putting a lot of pressure on you in the very, very near future, and I know you're ready for it, you said so. So, we're looking forward to this. Anyway, we do have a motion on the floor, all those in favor, and carried. Thank you.
I wasn't here.
Second report is one regarding Public Transit Infrastructure Fund and Transfer Payment Agreement.
Who, who is doing that one?
Public Infrastructure, Allen.
Sorry, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, late in 2016, we introduced the Public Transit Infrastructure Fund to council, and that was an investment of about $11.9 billion in transit infrastructure across Canada over five years. In phase one of this program, Leamington itself is eligible to receive a sum of $99,000 towards improvements to our transit infrastructure. So, administration submitted a request to the Public Transit Infrastructure Fund to complete Transit Master Plan, and to install sidewalk along Oak Street West between Nicholas and Fraser Road. And on March thirty-first, Leamington did receive approval of that funding through the program for the two projects, and we were advised of that, and I have a requirement to submit the, or to return the transfer payment agreement with a council resolution, and it's subject to signature by heads of council on behalf of the municipality, because we were advised that the Minister of Transportation will be signing this agreement. Just as a summary, though, of the projects that we will be looking at this year under this program, if you look at the financial impact section, you'll see that the Transit Master Plan is projected to cost about $75,000, with $34,000 coming from this fund, and the construction of the sidewalk along Oak Street between Nicholas and Fraser is estimated at around $130,000, with $65,000 coming from this fund. So, we are recommending that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute this agreement.
Thank you very much. Questions from council? Counselor Rubiki?
Worthy Mayor, through you. Allen, of course, dragging by, I still don't know why the front of high school is the way it is, but that's another story. Are you putting a sidewalk, it looks like they're digging it up by the road, is that gonna be a turn lane? Are you putting a sidewalk now from the high school to Nicholas? Or is it somebody else?
The site plan for the high school includes sidewalk from approximately the trail, Easterly to Nicholas.
That will be a continuous sidewalk?
Yes.
Where might it be going right now? When you look down that road, there's a few obstructions. Are we doing, setting it in? It's a different curb, are we going at the curb?
I believe the sidewalk is set off the road, I can't remember if it's behind the pole line or in front of the pole line.
And one more question, Worthy Mayor, is this part of this money, is this part of this county thing I keep reading in the papers, is this part of our share?
No. No, it's separate altogether. This was just new stuff that popped up at the county, yep. Any further questions? Moved by Counselor Dunn, supported by Counselor Hammond. Discussion on the motion. All in favor? And carried. Next report is one regarding the Leamington Kinsman Recreation Complex Arena Dehumidification System.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Here to present the report on the LKRC Arena Dehumidification System Tender. We prepared a tender to replace the dehumidification system that controls the environment within the Highbury and Unico Rinks. We did a facility condition assessment in December of 2013, which looked at all of our systems from a very high level. In that report, it expected the system to last approximately thirty years. There are a number of issues that have caused significant stress on the system. We've had continuous problems with it, so last year, we resourced a company to come in and take a look at it, do a condition assessment on the unit itself. The recommendation was to either repair it or replace it, and the costs were approximately the same. So, in looking at that, we decided to move forward with just purchasing a new one. Budget money was set aside for that for this year. Incorporated in that is some, I guess, some things that we'll do to correct the issues that caused those stresses. Part of that has to do with the orientation of the exhaust and the intake duct work from the system. So, although this budget is under what we budgeted for the year, of $170,000, we budgeted $200,000, the remaining funds is gonna go to look at reworking that duct work, so that we don't have the same stresses within the facility. The other part of it is another capital project we've got on the go, where we're gonna put a wall up to the entrance of the Highbury Rink, so that that environment within the hallway, the dressing room hallway, doesn't affect the environment on the ice, so we'll have better control of the temperatures within the arena side. Also, in repairing the dehumidification system, it'll allow us to move forward with other projects down the road, because when the environment is overly humid, it causes other issues, such as the paint flaking on the underside of decking, which is an issue in some locations of the Highbury Rink. So, once we have the humidity under control, we can start looking at doing projects like that, as well as possibly like a low-e ceiling to help with the sound, and other projects within that, painting the walls and such. So, the recommendation is to award it to Simco Refrigeration. We did a call for tenders. We had a mandatory site meeting, of which six contractors from southwestern Ontario came out. When the bids were submitted, we did only receive one submitted tender. It was from the contractor that does normally do work for us, so, the company, they do Simco Refrigeration, does a lot of work with all the arenas locally. So, yeah, that's the recommendation to award it to Simco, and authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the necessary agreement.
Thank you very much, Terry, and glad we had six contractors show up, but to beat Counselor Jacobs to it, it's too bad we only got one bid. And I'm sad you had to say that, because now he'll be all upset. Okay, Counselor Jacobs?
Well, he beat me to half my question, but the other half is the fact that, like, the other, excuse me, the other five, would this be exceeding their expertise in this type of work, or like, I can't understand why they would put a bid in. Would you be aware of that, Terry, at all, or no?
Of the five, there are one other, possibly two others, that I know historically would have the capabilities to perform the work. One for sure, who does work at Lake Shore currently. We are resourcing that company to assist us with any of our maintenance work, where we typically would single-source, because Simco was our, the only person that we knew around that did that type of work. Talking some of the other municipalities, there are other players, and we are getting them involved, and I think part of having the six at the meeting was the outreach that we had with having Gary there, the facility supervisor, networking and discussing the industry with the other municipalities. I think typically, we would have only had the one... I think typically, we would have only had the one contractor bid on something like this.
Yep, Peter?
And just further to that, I think one of the things that gives us a great confidence is that we have worked with this company before. They have some insight into our, our facilities that maybe the others didn't, uh, didn't feel quite so comfortable going into a facility that is 15 years old. I think it's 15 now, 15, 16 years old, as opposed to other companies that, um, they have the experience. Even though one may be at Lake Shore, that's a brand-new facility that they'll be paying for, for a long, long time.
Boy. Move by Counselor Hammond, supported by Counselor Dunn. Discussion on the motion. All in favor? Carried. Next item is a report regarding open and closed council meetings.
Each year, administration provides information on the number of open and closed meetings council holds annually, including the length of the meeting and the number of items considered. By annually recording and reporting these statistics, it provides open, greater accountability and transparency to the public on how council conducts its business. 2006 open public meetings are divided into two categories, the regularly scheduled meetings and special meetings. Council held a number of public meetings for zoning bylaw amendments and Drainage Act matters. But since these public meetings are held during regular council meetings, they've been counted, um, these meetings have not been counted separately. For regularly scheduled open meetings in 2016, there were 34 meetings, which council considered 232 agenda items. The total time spent in the meetings were 44 hours and 23 minutes, which means the average meeting lasted one hour and 18 minutes. In 2016, there were six open council meetings with eight items, special open council meetings with eight items being considered. Two meetings were for budget sessions, and one meeting was for strategic plan review. The other three meetings dealt with topics that included computer training, active transportation, uptown revitalization, and Bevel Line Tender Award. The total time spent in special open meetings was 15 hours and 17 minutes, with an average duration of two hours and 32 minutes. The information on closed meeting is also divided into two categories, meetings that deal with confidential business items and meetings that are scheduled for training or educational purposes. In 2016, there were 14 closed meetings with 22 business items being considered. The most common reason for the closed meeting was to consider disposition or acquisition of land. There were no closed meetings for education or training in 2016. This year, we've added a, a new paragraph in this report with respect to the integrity commissioner investigations. Council will recall in 2015, an integrity commissioner was appointed. An integrity commissioner is responsible for performing in an independent manner the functions assigned by the municipality with respect to the application for the code of conduct for members of council and/or the application of any procedures, rules, and policies of the municipality governing the ethical behavior of members of council. So in keeping with accountability and transparency, we're reporting that one complaint was received in 2016 by the integrity commissioner. Mr. Swayze informs that the complaint was dismissed as it fell outside his jurisdiction. It wasn't related to the code of conduct for members of council, nor the application of any procedures or rules or policies of the municipality. In accordance with the confidential nature of the position of the integrity commissioner, no details of the complaint were provided to the municipality. So in conclusion, in 2016, council met for a total of 64 hours and 59 minutes. Five hours and 19 minutes of that meeting time was spent in closed session, which means less than 8.18% of council meeting time was spent in closed session. So the recommendation before council is to receive the report.
Mr. Newfeld?
I'd like to take this opportunity, though, right from the beginning to, to clarify that these numbers are about meetings, council meetings. It does not account for the many, many hours of preparation and committee work and other meetings for organizations like the Union Water System and Police Services Board, and I can name many others that, uh, many, Committee of Adjustment, many, many, many of the other counselors take, uh, take very seriously and attend on a regular basis. So this, I just want to make it clear that this is just about council meetings.
Counselor Dunn? You're, oh, okay, you're moving the recommendation? Moved to receive, seconded by Counselor Verbiki. Counselor Jacobs?
Thank you, worship. Well, you went and took my thunder there, Peter, because when I read this, I figured, when the general public sees with me two hours and 36 minutes a month, it's a little over the top, but no, I, um, I wanted to bring forward tonight that being on council takes much more time than two hours and 36 minutes a month. And I wanted to emphasize that as well, but thank you for bringing that out, because I think the general public will have a Harry if they thought it was that known. Yeah.
I, you know what, counselor, I looked at it, I looked at it and I compared it to the years before, and I, I looked at it and I said, you know what? That's what happens when you have a council that works together efficiently and in a similar direction and doesn't waste a lot of time doing a bunch of other frivolous, non-meaning, non-meaningful stuff. So we have accomplished an awful lot in these last two years, and, and we've done it in, in a shorter amount of time, because we don't bicker about winning or losing a vote. And I, I think that's really reflective in what's happened here. And when you look around what's happening in this town, I think you can all agree that we have certainly moved things forward. I think our, our administration has spent a lot more time making the reports a lot clearer and easier for us to, to deal with. And I think that's all reflective in, in the time we see there. So that's how I, how I took it. Yes, it wasn't. It wasn't that long. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to receive the report. All in favor? And carried. And the final, last but not least, the only gentleman left in the audience. Report regarding access agreements to South Essex Fabricating. And Ruth, you taking us through this?
Yes, and as you'll see, Mr. Newland is here from South Essex Fabricating. And as you also may know, they are constructing the new track at the Leamington District Secondary School property. And I've referred to that in the report as the school board lands. Access to the lands upon which the track will be constructed, which is at the rear of the property, is limited from the Oak Street West real access point to the school board lands. So South Essex Fabricating has asked to cross the Leamington lands, which is the trail lands, and you can see that right in the middle of that aerial photo up on the screen. So the plan is that South Essex Fabricating will receive consent from the owner farther to the east of the Leamington lands to access where you can see kind of a dirt trail on those lands, across the red highlighted area, and then into the school board lands, which right on that picture appear vacant, but now the school is being constructed there. Uh, we've reviewed the request, and a draft agreement has been prepared, and it grants the right to South Essex Fabricating to use the subject lands for the purpose of ingress and egress to the lands located to the east and to the west of the Leamington lands. The substantive terms are within the report, but the, um, the ones I'd like to highlight are the term, which is from tomorrow, if council approves this. It would terminate on June the 1st, 2020, so I understand the construction is in two phases that would occur over that period of time. The other provisions I'd like to highlight is that South Essex Fabricating would preserve and protect the grass, the trees, and any plantings on the subject lands, which again, is just that little red highlighted area, and would replace any, any grass, trees, or plantings that are damaged during the terms of its use. It would keep the subject lands clear of machinery, equipment, and materials, and wouldn't lay down any equipment on the subject lands. It's really for just the purpose of ingress and egress. That it would ensure that the, it's, it's a bicycle and walking trail, and would ensure that there's no ruts or depressions or other hazards in that subject area. And to ensure the safety of the public using those subject lands as a bicycle and walking trail, and install pedestrian and traffic protection signs and temporary fencing, which would really direct the, the pedestrian and bicycle traffic into a narrow portion that is better protected than the open area of the, the wide trail, and ensure that there's signage posted so that persons are looking for vehicular traffic crossing that, but also signage posted for the vehicular traffic to watch for pedestrians. There is really no financial impact to the municipality for allowing the use of these lands, and administration is not recommending a fee to be charged for the use of the lands. So the recommendation is that council approve the use of a portion of the municipal trail lands, and describe the legal description within the agreement, and that council authorize the entering into of an agreement with South Essex Fabricating in a form consistent with the contents of the report, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute the agreement.
Thank you very much, Ruth. So before I go to council members, I would like you to do me a favor, Mr. Newland. I would like to take you, or have you take back to, um, your, your, yeah, well, I'll just say it, Peter, and tell him thank you very, very much for stepping up and making such an effort to help out, um, building, designing, building, and installing a track and field that is desperately needed at that new high school. We talked about it, gosh, two years ago now, two years ago now. I was excited back then. All the roadblocks that he has run into would have driven me crazy. So I'm glad he's stuck with it. I was happy to see this report on there, so just, if you'll do that for me, I'd appreciate it. I'm sure he'll be calling me sooner or later to give me heck about something, and I can thank him then, but, you know, to, just kind of cool him off.
I, I will do that, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. So I have Counselor Dunn first.
Through you, worship, I just want to thank you and your company, South Essex Fabricating, for the, the great things that this can be, help the students and, and the community, so kudos. I, I didn't realize, but thank you very much. This is huge for our community, and we really, really appreciate it.
I should, I should point out that it's both Peter and his wife Kathy Quiring's initiative to do this. So I want to make that very clear, that both of them are, are, are behind this.
Thank you to both of them, and pass on our.
I will.
Deepest gratitude for this.
I'll do that.
Counselor Jacobs?
Thank you, worship. Um, my question is, do you have access to this access? I was looking at the map, I know there's a vacant property there currently.
To the, to the east?
Yeah. Is that what, you plan on coming through? Like, has that been arranged and?
Yes, uh, Peter Quiring has talked with Dave DeMena, I believe, is the property owner, and he has been very gracious in allowing us that particular access over his property to come through the, the town property to get to the school board property, yes. Yes.
Like a long list of let's get to it, but.
Yeah, yeah. But he's been, he's been very gracious, too.
Yeah, that's, that's the first thing I noticed on here, that, you know, it's going to take some coordination to, to get equipment and that back in there.
We've done that.
Great job, you guys, yes.
Counselor Hammond?
Sorry, I guess you could have, your worship, thank you. John, as I went through this in a weekend, too, and I'll just add to what the mayor and, and Counselor Dunn had said. Tell Peter and Kathy that we really appreciate the efforts put forward, and tell them thank you on behalf of all of us.
Thank you, John.
And my grandchildren, kids that are going to that school.
Any further questions? Do we, do we have a motion on that? No, we don't have a motion. And who would like to? Moved by Counselor Jacobs, supported by Counselor Hammond. Discussion on the motion. Thanks for hanging around for so long. We could, why don't we just debate this for a little while, just to?
Well, I, I know so many people here, I feel like I'm in a family group outing anyway, so it's, I, I appreciate, I appreciate that, that sentiment, and I'll pass everything along to both Peter and Kathy. And, and I, I have to also say this, that working with Peter Newfeld and with Ruth Orton was, was a pleasure, and they were incredibly gracious and accommodating, and I appreciate the work that both of them did to help make this happen as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Yes, excellent. All in favor of that motion? And carried. Thank you, sir. Moving on to matters for approval, we have the minutes from the Leamington Accessibility Advisory Committee, held March 29th. Looking for mover and seconder? Counselor Dunn and Counselor Verbiki. Discussion on the motion. All in favor? Carried. There were no other matters for consideration. No report on closed session, so consideration of bylaws.
Bylaw 27-17 being a bylaw to amend the comprehensive zoning bylaw 890-09 for the municipality of Leamington, which pertains to the subject lands ZBA 142, 1827 Deer Run Road 3, that's from report PLA 1017 earlier. Bylaw 2817 being a bylaw to amend comprehensive zoning for the municipality of Leamington, which pertains to subject lands ZBA 145, 1328 Mercia Road 6, and that's also from a report earlier PLA 1117. Bylaw 29-17 being a bylaw to amend the comprehensive zoning bylaw number 890-09 for the municipality of Leamington, which pertains to the subject lands ZBA number 85, 523 and 525 Mercia Road 3, and that's from a public meeting and its report PLA 15-17 earlier this evening. Bylaw 32-17 being a bylaw to levy taxes for the year 2017. And bylaw 33-17 being a bylaw to appoint municipal law enforcement officers for the purpose of enforcing dog registration compliance for the municipality of Leamington. And bylaw 34-17 being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council from its meeting held May 8, 2017.
Council's wishes. Moved by Counselor Wilkinson, supported by Counselor Dunn. Discussion on the motion. All in favor? Carried. There were no notices of motion circulated, so we're into open session. Counselor Dunn?
Through you, worship, I'd like to pass along my appreciation of Luanne and the administration for coming down and responding really quickly regarding the, and monitoring the situation of the flooding down, uh, towards Mercia Park there. They came down and they monitored the situation. They couldn't do anything because the waves were coming over so badly, but they did monitor the situation, and I do appreciate their quick response to the situation. So I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Wilkinson?
Thank you, worship. Um, forgive me, I know nobody will be prepared to answer this question, but if you want to take a stab at it, you're more welcome to.
It's a setup.
It's regarding, it's regarding the Seabass Trail and County Road 20. We had so long to apply for the construction funding for the 2018 season, I think it is, which I think was mid-June, end of June. I'm wondering if we can get an update. Will we see something on that soon?
I'll let Mr. Newfeld answer that. We just talked about that today.
On March 23rd, municipality of Leamington administration met with county administration to discuss, well, we, we went for a, a drive out to County Road 20 to look at the state of the curbs, because that has been the point of contention all along, that these curbs need to be replaced. And, uh, and their position is, well, they, they wouldn't be replacing them if we weren't putting in the bike paths, which we found very difficult to believe considering the state of disrepair of the curbs. They, the response back was, when we finished the tour, was, yeah, we know the curbs are bad. We, they're 80% to 100% beyond their life, useful life. And so this caught me a little surprised, because then I was wondering, well, then what's the, what's the issue? And the issue is that if, as stated by the county, that if, if the bike paths weren't going in, they wouldn't be replacing the curbs, they'd just be redoing the road. So just this morning, I, I sent an email to the county CAO asking for an update. We, we discussed the possibility of moving forward with a different funding formula to recognize that the curbs are in a state of disrepair beyond what, what one would expect the municipality to contribute to, given that the curbs are the infrastructure of the county. We've not heard back in, in the six weeks. I, I mentioned to the deadline is in June. We would like to be able to apply for it if we can come to some terms, but I've not yet heard back. But in, in fairness, that reminder email was just sent this morning to the county CAO.
Counselor Verbiki?
We're the mayor. Thank you. I just want to give my brief report on the Osom convention that you and I went to. I'm just going to say what I did, I don't want to steal any of your thunder. I think everybody should give a report. I guess we started with the five hours up and five hours back of rain. Wednesday evening, we had dinner, you and I, and we happened to see Minister Bill Monroe there, the Minister of Municipal Affairs, and we talked for a bit, and it was a good talk. I guess when they're in, out of their environment, they're, they're true. They're, they're like us, but I guess they have to... Oh, you're over there. The one, well, there's several sessions that we went to, but the one that, you know, the one was the uploading of medicine, provincial government. It's everywhere, and we just want to make sure that we keep picking at this so we get the needed help, because we need more hospitals than we need daycare right now. Then Bill's, Minister Monroe spoke, Minister of Municipal Affairs, he spoke on the Ontario budget and what, and what it means to us, and I'm just going to leave it right there, because what does it mean to us? The keynote speaker was very interesting. He was the former premier of British Columbia, Mike Harcourt. He presented us with what has changed in the political politics since he was in his More investment is needed in, of course, we know that, municipal infrastructure was next with Ben Dayish. He was, he's with the C.D. Howe Institute, and he shared his insight, so what we need, but it's pretty much what we know. Taking the jolt out of hydro was one of the best presentations, Alec Davidson, Tim Curtis, and Paul Murphy. They gave a stellar talk about the difference hydro generation models and what it cost us, and you'd be surprised with the numbers up there, and I still didn't find out what the other generating one was, what it actually cost us, and what other provinces and states are, are paying and receiving. And they stated how much hydro will be going up in the future. If you think it's bad now, it's going to be unbelievable. I don't know what's going to happen, or anybody should start. To me, the highlight of the whole convention was President of AMO, Association of Municipalities of Ontario, President Lynn Doyle. She gave a non-stop talk. I'd like to call it a rant, because it was excellent. Municipalities, all 444 of us that are in the province, and she held nothing back. About ministers and other government officials that I really can't repeat, but it was in jest, and it was really in jest, but, I mean, she did say something that caught my eye, and I'll share it with you later. Use later, if you want. And I just want to say that next year, Osom is being held in this small urban municipality of Niagara Falls, so I'm going to leave it at that, and it was the next one time. Oh, and did I say it was five hours coming back was raining, too? Okay, thank you, and thanks for letting me go. And I did win a prize there. I didn't bring the book with me, because I think I'll leave it in the county or office, our office post news or post box there, but I did win a set of golf balls, and I graciously handed them over to our mayor. Not that he lost that many on the course.
I did so, just admit it.
So, I replaced what he lost on the course, so thank you very much for going, and that's my report. If you want me to submit it, I will. Thank you.
Counselor Jacobs? Oh, I thought you had to hear that. Counselor Hammond, then, sorry.
Your worship, thank you. I just want to take a moment to thank McDonald's for allowing us to come up and be a part of their McHappy Day on Wednesday, and also Counselor Dunn was there as well. I worked for a little over an hour in the drive-through, and I have a different appreciation for what goes on there now. The gals, I know one was Carly Bonham, and I'm, the other two ladies over there, I'm sorry, I don't remember their names, but they work hard at doing that, and they're very gracious, and again, I wanted to thank them, and thank McDonald's for all the funds that they've, they made and passed on that day.
Well, I'll thank both of you for being there. Like, as you know, we were away, but I'm glad somebody was able to go. I've done that, we've done that a few times now, actually, and it is, it's hard, especially when you don't know what you're doing, so, but anyway, good, good. Well, I mean, totally inexperienced, that's what I mean. Anyway, Counselor Dunn? Yes?
Through your worship, yeah, it was a great day. They told me at five o'clock, they figured they're around $10,000 on the outdoor, and the gracious donations for our community was just huge. I mean, $20 and then $5 and $10 just coming up, yeah, so that was just, it was, like Counselor Hammond said, it was a lot of work running back and forth and talking to people, but, yeah, it was great. Thanks.
Very good. Mr. Neufeld?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On April 26th to April 29th, Leamington hosted the Junior National Racquetball Championships at the Leamington Kinzman Recreation Complex, and I have a couple of points I want to make about that. First, again, a group of citizens, residents, Matt Deck and Paul Bateman.
Andrew.
Sorry, Andrew, sorry, Andrew Deck, thank you. Andrew Deck and, and Paul Bateman organized this, this tournament, made the application, and was able to secure the Junior National Racquetball Championships right here in Leamington. That's in keeping with, you know, Leamington Council's strategic plan to start getting into some of the amateur sports tourism, and for an organization within the municipality to take the initiative to get that started really speaks volume, volumes to the correctness of that decision in that, in that direction. So, I wanted to thank them for, for taking that initiative. The second point I wanted to make about this was that we have facilities, we have great facilities, and when we first looked at, when we first heard that they were going to, had secured these championships, speaking with Terry, and, you know, this is the, this is the downfall of not speaking to the issue when Terry was here, but I spoke with Terry and Gary and Jeff at the time, and Paul since coming on, on board. We took, we took steps to make sure that we put our best foot forward. The wood floors on, in the two premier courts were sanded and made smooth. Fairly significant portion of the one floor was replaced, because the wood was so, so warped and in such bad shape, apparently from a couple of floodings that had occurred in previous years when the roof leaked. And also upstairs, as time was short, I still ask that the, there were viewing areas upstairs for the two premier courts that had been covered in previous years with drywall and insulating materials and those sorts of things, and I asked that those be taken down, that the facility be restored to its original purpose, and one of our core competencies, which is racquetball. And the comments, I attended there on a couple of the days and spoke to some of the people from, there were coaches from British Columbia, there were organizers of Racquetball Canada, also from out west, who spoke very, very highly of our facilities. I was, I have to say that I was especially proud that we took those steps, but I also wanted to acknowledge the extra efforts of Terry and Gary and Jeff and Paul in getting that facility ready so that Leamington could be put on the map.
Anyone else? All good? So, I'll just touch on that really quickly, too, because Paul Bateman and Andrew invited me out to do the, the welcome, I guess, speech, whatever you want to call it, just talk. So, I was really surprised to watch all the athletes walked in, because they came from the west coast to the east coast. So, I can, I can't remember, it was B.C., Manitoba, Ontario, Quebec for sure, east coast, do you remember, Paul, at all? Whether it was New Brunswick or... No, no, they, they're too busy curling, right? No, but, but it was, it was so cool, all these, like, from wee little kids up to the teenagers, just pushing the age limit on this, but I, I, too, was really, really impressed with the, the court. I haven't played there for a long, long time, but the courts looked absolutely wonderful, and the viewing area was nice to having, having that done again. And Paul and Andrew actually snivelled some so-called portable bleachers that they had to assemble for the viewing area down on the main floor, take them apart, take them back to, was it Essex, and put them back together again for them. So, these two guys certainly went out of their way to help out this municipality, so it was really, really awesome. Sunday, April 30th, Mr. Neufeld and I took the long trek up to the University of Waterloo at special invitation of a group, and I can't remember their overall encompassing title, but it was Aqua Hacking, where there were not just students, but people that formed teams to try and tackle the issues that the Great Lakes are facing, the invasive species, the plastics, the algae blooms, and all that kind of thing. These, this, this group had been to see us here at Town Hall earlier, and then invited us up to this actual presentation so that we could go in and say, here's what's happening in Leamington, and this is the information we have. So, we were up there, again, three-hour drive there. I think we were only supposed to present for 15 minutes, but we were at least an hour, hour and a half, maybe, because they kept firing questions at us. It was really, really great. So, we've kind of left it in their hands to see where it will go. Hopefully, they can come up with some ideas on how we can promote our ideas, the sewer lines, north and south, east and west, to the provincial and federal governments, and see if we can't push for funding in that regard. So, it was really worthwhile, worthwhile visit. While we were there, just as we were leaving, I had the, the one gentleman who was in a suit and tie, other than, well, no, we didn't wear ties, chase me out the door, asking about the investment possibilities in Leamington, so, and we weren't talking small investments, we were talking fairly significant. So, even if that transpires, it was well worth the visit. Last week, as you've just heard from Counselor Verbiki, we attended, the two of us attended the Osom meeting, and I, I don't want to go over everything, because basically Larry hit on everything that I was going to talk about with Mr. Harcourt, the former premier of B.C., and the minister, but I think where we made some, think, we made some inroads, was with the Minister of Municipal Affairs. We just happened to be at the same restaurant, and he and his assistant were sitting there by themselves, and we walked in, I nodded to them, we sat down, and we kind of tried to decide, should we, should we, should we, you know, because they're having their private time as well, right? But we walked over, had our tomatoes with us, and just that led to a whole conversation about the municipality, the issues that we have here, and it, it really did turn into a, quite a friendly conversation, and I know we made an impression, a good one, just so you don't have to worry about. We also had a bit of time at the mayor's welcome on Thursday evening to actually stand around with a bunch of other members of councils from Middlesex County and so on and so forth, where they talked about how they watch us on TV all the time. They also watch another municipality down this way, too, and they, they thought our council meetings were done very professionally. They referred specifically to our previous difficult decision that we had to made, and thought, what a professional, wonderful job we did in handling that situation. So, we, a lot of kudos coming towards Leamington. And finally, I think the best part of networking that I had the opportunity to do was Larry and I did play in the golf day pre, pre-conference, and luck would have it, my partner just happened to be the president of AMO. So, Lynn Doyle and I drove around in a golf cart for five hours, talking about everything under the sun we could think of, developed a really, really nice relationship with her, so I know that when Leamington needs something from AMO, it'll just be a quick phone call, and that answer will be had. So, very, very worthwhile conference to attend. The things that we did learn, I thought Larry was going a different direction with the, taking the jolt out of hydro, but, boy, I walked out of there totally depressed after that one. And just interesting to listen how the mayors from different areas, not just Ontario, the issues that they face in their, their healthcare system. The one that really kind of hit me the wrong way was, his name was Robert Morton, he's the board chair of the LIN and North Simco. Oh, pardon me, he was the good, he was the good one. It was the CAO of Perry Sound Hospital. He was up there saying that municipalities need to start handing more money over to their local medical facilities, hospital facilities. That's what I did. I said, did I hear that right? That's the last thing municipalities want to do is get involved in healthcare funding, but that's what this guy was promoting. But then, Marv, Robert Morton from the LIN said, no, 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 the way to do this is better health, better care, and better value, and the more we do, the better we do it, the better health, the more we reduce the cost of care and get better value for our dollar spent. So, anyway, it was really great conference. We've got our books with us. If you guys want to go over it any time and just ask some questions, you can. And that is it for me. So, if we're all good, anybody else from staff? Oh, I should have said, five hours up in the pouring down rain and five hours back in the pouring down rain, with a great co-pilot. Yes, there are. We didn't know. Statements, members, non-debatable. I see none? Oh, Counselor Jacobs?
Yes, I just wanted to give congratulations to Horticultural Society. I attended their Horticultural District 11 on Saturday morning and brought greetings from the town, and they had quite a good, an attendance, quite impressive. They had around 100 individuals there for that, so, very good.
Thank you. Counselor Wilkinson?
And we should thank the Chartwell community that invited us over to the open house last Sunday. Fantastic facility, impressive facility, actually. Yes, thank you very much, enjoyed tremendously.
Again, glad both of you could represent. Motion to adjourn? Counselor Jacobs, Counselor Wilkinson, all in favor? Carried.